I want to welcome everyone to the January 14th meeting of Franklin County Planning Commission. I hope everyone had a good holiday. I hope everyone is looking forward to having a very good year upcoming, et cetera, so forth and so on. And at this point in time, I need to find out, Darrell Sanderson, are you on the line? Are you with us? Robert, is he coming, you know?
I sent him the link. I can give him a message real fast and see if he's showing up.
Okay. Because I wanted to get Vicki to administer the oath before we got started, if at all possible. But I don't see him on the line, so we'll forego that until you get him.
He was sworn in during business hours today by Vicki.
Okay. In that case, then we'll ask the secretary to call the roll. Maybe?
I would give her a minute, she's probably having issues.
Yeah, I think she left the meeting and has logged back in. Well, while we wait for her to log back in, for those of you who do not know, need to inform you that Mr. Nickle, Jim Nickle, resigned from the Planning Commission in fiscal court, named his replacement to serve out the final portion of his term. And that person is Darrell Sanderson, who has served on the Planning Commission before, served in the class with basically all the faculties, as a regular member, Secretary Treasurer, Vice Chair, and Chair of the Planning Commission, doing his tenure. So at some point, Darrell will come in and join us. And just wanted to let you know that he's coming and et cetera. Vicki, back? Yes?
I just emailed with Darrell Sanderson and I've asked him to log back in. He noticed that there was an issue. So he should be coming in very shortly.
I just texted Vicki, she said she lost audio, give her a minute. I think this might be her down here.
Mr. Jackson, before the meeting starts, would it be appropriate to talk about the nominating committee? Or should we wait till the meeting's going?
Well, I've got a list of names here for the nominating committee. And if Darrell and the secretary are going to join us, I may as well announce those people once the secretary is back.
I'm back.
You're back?
I'm back using the phone, yes. Sorry about that. I lost my audio.
No problem.
So are you ready for me to call the roll?
Please.
Okay, Kate Bennett.
Yes ma'am, here.
Patty Cross.
I'm also having audio issues.
Keith Lee. Paul Looney.
Yes.
Timothy Lusher.
Yes.
Darrell Sanderson.
Here.
Charles Stewart.
Here.
Jim Terrell.
Here.
Russell Wright.
Here.
Chairman Jackson.
Here.
Four and eleven.
All right. Welcome, everyone. And Darrell Sanderson has joined us. You should be able to see him someplace on your screen. He's at the bottom left of my screen. Welcome back, Darrell.
Hey Keith. Robert.
We have minutes from December 10th. And I believe we have minutes from the November meeting. Chair, entertain a motion regarding the minutes. November 12th, December 10th.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. I make the motion that we approve the minutes for the November 12th, 2020, and the December 10th, 2020 meeting.
I second.
Okay. Good move and properly second that the minutes from November 12th and the minutes from the December 10th special meeting be approved. Is there a discussion on the motion? Is there a discussion on the motion? Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing none, seeing no hands. All in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
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 Opposed likewise? Hearing none, motion passes. Chair, entertain a motion on the payment of bills. And that should be the revised set of bills that we got from staff this week.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
David Boggs.
I move we pay the bills on the revised agenda.
They're second.
Second.
Okay. Move them properly second that we pay the bills as enumerated in the agenda. Are there questions on the motion? Questions on the motion? Questions on the motion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed likewise? No opposition, motion passes. Now, next item on the agenda is reports of officers. Should not be any. Reports outstanding committee. I think we have a zoning ordinance update committee coming up. Charlie, you want to give us a date and a time for that, please?
So next week, we have the Comp Plan Steering Committee. Next Wednesday, the 20th at 5:30. And then we have scheduled our next zoning ordinance update committee meeting, I believe, the following week, if I'm correct, on the 20th. Let me pull my calendar here.
27th?
That's what I was going to say, I was just double checking before I said that out loud.
Sorry.
And then, yeah.
Reports of special select committees, which is really where the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee would be. Let me give you a couple of updates on that, and then we'll move to the next item. On the Comprehensive Plan Update Committee, the meeting is scheduled for January 20th, 5:30 PM. It'll be a Zoom meeting. And we will have a new member of that committee. As you know, the City Commission lost all except for one member. Mr. Eric Wisman, who was serving on this committee, did not get reelected to the City Commission. And therefore, the City Commission has appointed a new member to replace Mr. Wisman. That replacement will be the Mayor Wilkinson himself. Mayor Wilkinson himself will serve as part of the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee and will be invited to participate in the January 20th meeting. The Steering Committee has developed a preliminary RFP draft and will, on the 20th, review a revised version of that RFP for selection of a consultant. Everybody is, of course, invited to participate in that. But we'll have the mayor. Now, we've also lost, as I said, one member of Nickle. And Mr. Sanderson replaces Mr. Nickle on the mission. Mr. Nickle was serving as the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. And we will, in my next piece, identify the nominating committee. And the nominating committee will give us a slate of officers and the Vice Chair, and maybe even a Chair, I don't know, would then assume the position that was identified for the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission to continue that process. Are there questions about where we are with the Comp Plan process? Hearing none? I want to move to the appointment of the nominating committee to give us a slate of officers for consideration at our February meeting. We'll have three members of the commission serving on the nominating committee. And those three members who I asked to serve as Chair, Ms. Patty Cross and Mr. David Boggs. And we asked them to get together and discuss officers for the upcoming year and report back to us at the February meeting. And I'll remind everyone that while we will have a slate of officers at the February meeting, if you feel so led, you nominate yourself or have someone else nominate you at the February meeting for whichever slot you think you want to fill. The officers that they will bring back to us would be Chair, Vice Chair, and an individual to serve as Secretary Treasurer. Presently, I am the Chair. Mr. Nickle is Vice Chair. And the Secretary Treasurer is Ms. Catherine Bennett, who's with us on telephone.
Chairman, who's the other besides David and Patty? I heard those two names, who was the other person?
David Boggs, Patty Cross, and Mr. Keith Lee.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I asked Mr. Lee to serve as the Chair. The next item on our next item on our agenda is staff reports, if there are any. Robert, do you or Eric, either one have a report that you want to make to us?
I have nothing, county has nothing.
I've got nothing either, other than the previous announcements about the complaints during committee and zoning update.
Okay. Then we're at old business. We'll ask the secretary to call the first item under old business, please.
Mr. Jackson, actually, not to interrupt you, we did have under staff items, review and adoption of the 2021 meeting schedule. I almost forgot. And I emailed you all copies of that meeting calendar this afternoon. Unfortunately, I didn't get them into the package last week. If you received those and had an opportunity to take a look, you could go over that. Otherwise, we will forward to you those calendars next month.
Did everyone get a chance to take a look at the meeting calendar? Good. Does anyone object to the meeting calendar? Or any dates on the meeting calendar?
Mr. Jackson, if I could, just state for the record, we once again strive to maintain the second Thursday of every month at 5:30 PM for the Planning Commission. Is that correct, Mr. Cochran?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But, well, I made an assumption that's incorrect and improper. Everyone doesn't know that the second Thursday of each month is the regular meeting date of the Planning Commission, as been for the last 30 years. I wouldn't assume that anyone would want to change that. If we have no objection. Let's get a motion, let's put it in a minute. Let's get a motion to approve the meeting calendar, please. Anybody can do it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Make the motion that we approve the meeting calendar for the 2021 meeting session.
Got a motion by Mr. Lee. I believe I have a second by Mr. Terrell. Questions on the motion? Questions on the motion? Questions on the motion? Mr. Looney?
But I did notice November is the third Thursday, it was the 11th. Is that because it's Veterans Day? Is that why we skipped the 11th there?
I believe so.
And typically, we do not have a meeting in December, unless absolutely necessary. Other question? That being done, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? Hearing none, motion passes. Ms. Sewell, are you still there?
I think so.
You're right. I hear you. Talking about the old business.
Okay. Continuation of public hearing. Kip Company LLC in care of Charles E. Jones is requesting approval of the zone map amendment from limited commercial district CL to general commercial district CG for the property located at 452 Versailles Road. Property can be more specifically identified as PBA map number 085-00-00-016.01. This is a city item.
Got it. I asked for someone to make a motion on the summary. Need to make sure that everyone, including the public, has clarity on what we're doing. When the public hearing was closed at our last meeting, and therefore, the commission will pull the summary and the item from the table in order that findings of fact can be identified and a determination made as to whether or not the commission would recommend a zone change or not recommend a zone change. Given the matter of the pandemic and the manner in which it has affected our meetings, we received a number of emails, letters, and comments even after the public hearing took place and was laid on the table. I want to reassure the people who are monitoring and listening to our meeting that all emails and letters have been shared with the members of the commission. Those letters and emails were to be read by members of the commission and given whatever weight they deserve in terms of making a determination as to the recommendation of a zone change or a recommendation not to make the zone change. So all of your concerns, all of your letters are being considered as part of this process. Want to reassure you. Now, at this point, Chair will entertain a motion to remove the item from the table and to deal with the summary.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I make the motion that we take the item from the table and receive a finding of fact.
They're second.
Second.
I second.
Move them properly second.
Who seconded? Oh, others.
Patty Cross and someone else seconded too. Who was the other person? I did, Charles Stewart. All right. You get that, Vicki?
I did, thank you.
Okay. Been moved and properly seconded that the item be removed from the table and that the summary be adopted for the purpose of finding a fact. There a discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Call the roll, Madam Chairman, I mean, Secretary.
Kate Bennett.
Yes, aye.
David Boggs.
Yes.
Mr. Boggs. Ms. Cross.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Looney.
Yes.
Mr. Lusher.
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Terrell.
Yes.
Mr. Wright.
Yes.
Chairman Jackson.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Logan.
For purposes of the record, can we clarify whether or not Mr. Sanderson has reviewed the tape or record of the last public hearing so that he may or may not vote on this issue?
Well, you and I were speaking along the same line.
That is very on your part, Mr. Jackson.
Oh, no problem. It's always good to have good advice, sir. Okay. So, Mr. Sanderson, based on your response, we would not anticipate that you would take part in this particular item. in the the floor is open for finding and adoption of findings of fact.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to make the findings of fact from page 10 of the staff report,
Got that, did we get a second?
Second.
We got a second by Mr. Lusher. Is there a discussion on the findings of fact? Or, oh, we want to get a vote on those four findings of fact. All in favor of the four findings of fact?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I do have a question, if I may, on the findings of fact.
So, yes, sir.
On, because we, number two, proposed zoning is appropriate for this site. That was one of the ones that we, all four of those, were those motioned? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir. All four, the motion was for all four.
Okay. The, I get, the question I have, and it relates to reading through the public comment, and multiples of those had questions. And I had discussed this briefly with staff earlier. The issue was basically related to significant numbers of parcels, particularly along this corridor, that have zoning, that has intended uses, you see, commercial highway, plant commercial, more intensive than the current limited commercial that this has that are vacant. And why that we would increase intensity of zoning on a tract when there's vacant tracks available. And that's, I guess it relates to that finding of fact there to a degree. So I guess that's my question that I would have in relation. So I felt, I wanted to bring that up since that was a question asked quite a bit by the public.
I put the findings out there, so if I may, Mr. Jackson, try to comment on that if I may. And basically, what I think is, we have to really kind of concentrate on this particular item in front of us. If it's a If it's appropriate for what they want to do, it's it's very hard to, you know, half mile down the road, you know, the other side of the road, you know, that would be better for this opportunity. That's, that's more about in the owner's decision, not really in ours, in my opinion.
Mr. Logan, you were about to make a comment.
My, my comment was is that the finding says that the proposed CG zoning is appropriate for this site. There has been no motion that says other zoning might be appropriate.
It will. I think we'll, we'll offer that opportunity once we dispose of this motion. We will continue to receive findings of fact, so.
That's my point, sir. I think the, these findings are pretty clear. What Mr. Looney is addressing not really item number two. Item number two just says that one is appropriate. It doesn't exclude any others.
Mr. Looney, are you satisfied with that response at the moment?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Lee, Mr. Logan, I appreciate that. Again, I wanted to get some of this out since there was a lot of public comment to have some discussion so that they could, that there could be clarity in this. Thank you.
Okay. Where were we? Are there other questions or comments on the motion? Hearing non, all in favor of motion, please vote aye.
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 Aye. Opposed likewise. There's no opposition, motion passes, so we have four findings of fact. Are there other findings of fact to be offered?
Mr. Chairman. I'll make the motion of findings of fact, see.
There was a loud noise in the background, Mr. Lee. I did not hear what you said.
No problem, repeat. Make the motion to close findings of fact.
They're seconded.
I second it.
Motion by Mr. Lee, seconded by Mr. Boggs, that finding of fact, see? There's a discussion on the motion. They're in a discussion on the motion. In a discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
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 Opposed likewise, Mr. Logan, were you about to say something?
No.
Okay. Opposed likewise, please. Hearing non, motion passes. Now we're at the stage of discussion or offering a motion to either approve and send a recommendation to fiscal court to change the zoning of the property or to not change the zoning of the property.
Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion, but if the motion's approved, I would like to discuss it before we have a vote, if that's okay. And my motion is this, I make the motion to approve, repress, and recommend to the city or county, I assume it's.
It's in city.
City, to the city. The city approval of the zone change from C, uh, let me make sure I get it right, from, from CL to CG for the property located at 452 for Sales Road with the condition that all development plans must come back before this body.
Did I see, did I see a second?
Second.
Got a second, Mr. Lesher and Ms. Cross.
And Mr. Chairman, for vote, please. I want to reasoning, I want to put that condition on, they're talking about this property could be phased. And there's a lot of questions as far as storm sewer runoff, many things, you know, it's right next to a community and I think coming back to this board, the people that are in that area will have a, certainly have an opportunity to see what there is coming up and have an input on, on how it's put in setbacks, storms, water, many things. And so I just want to clarify that to everybody before the vote.
Okay. I agree with you. Madam Secretary, Colleen.
Ms. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Boggs. Mr. Boggs.
Yes.
Ms. Cross. Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Looney.
Yes.
Mr. Lesher.
Yes.
Mr. S, uh, Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Terrell.
Yes.
Mr. Wright.
Yes.
Chairman Jackson.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Jones, that concludes your request at least on that item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Secretary, would you call item number one under new business?
Public hearing, Precious Frankfurt One LLC is requesting approval of a zone map amendment from residential B District RB and limited commercial district CL to limited commercial district CL for the property located at 101 Martin Luther King Boulevard. The property can be more specifically identified as PBA map number zero seven five dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero zero four point oh four. This is a city item.
Mr. Logan, do you mind qualifying staff?
As soon as staff is turned in, I will be happy to.
All right.
Mr. Cockley, would you raise your right hand and be sworn? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Cockley, would you state your name and position with the city of Frankfurt?
Eric Cockley, I'm director of the Planning and Community Development Department.
As director of that department, have you reviewed the application for a zone map amendment from residential B to limited commercial CL for property located 101 Martin Luther King Boulevard?
I have.
And have you made a staff report and reduced that report to writing? Is that staff report based upon your training, education, and experience in the area of planning?
It is.
And after review of this report, it appears that you made positive findings on each and every area and goal of consideration, is that correct?
That is correct.
Furthermore, did the TRT Review Committee look at this proposal?
They did.
Did they have any issues with the zone change as proposed?
No, sir.
Would you briefly present to the commission the basis of this application and your general approval?
Sure, so the request for the zone change is in order for the development of an assisted living facility on the property consisting per the concept plan of 120 units. The property is currently zoned partially, there's a small corner of its own CL, the remainder is zoned RB, which is our medium density, single family detached district. The property's future land use designation is suburban residential neighborhood, which generally allows for both single family detached and then in other places as a transition, both multifamily residential uses as well as non-residential uses, particularly the location of the property that may be at the intersection of two arterial roadways, which this property does come to, to be at. There's an existing entrance and if anybody's visited the site, some, some grade work that had been done over the last 18 months or so. I think for purposes of marketing the site for use. Other than that, it's largely an undeveloped piece of property. The surrounding area is institutional offices, four lane, as I mentioned, arterial roadways and actually railroad that runs behind it, so no, no immediately adjoining, you know, lower intensity single family detached residential or even other than the, the related, you know, institutional and office uses. Based upon review of the proposal, the proposed zoning, the future land use designation and the characteristics of the surrounding area, as you see my report, I believe the zoning is appropriate based on that, that analysis. TRT has reviewed it and we haven't had any negative findings in terms of supplying the, the project with utilities and facilities. The planning commission's traffic consultant was forwarded this just to be sure because it's a significant sized development, but it's unique in the fact that while there may be a lot of units, you know, the unique thing about assisted living is you're going to have a lot of folks who aren't actually driving in and out of the case. The, the traffic counts were deemed to be low enough that a traffic study was not deemed necessary. Beyond that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
One further question, Mr. Cockley. Do you propose as a finding of fact that the scale zoning is appropriate for the site?
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I've moved it to staff board and it's still filed in the record.
So be it. Does the applicant have questions of staff? Hearing non, does commission members have questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This property borders, this guy go over creek, but it does attach to Glen's Creek Road. Is that, is the only interest of this thing going to be off of Martin Luther King or is, are they going to have a dual interest? Just, what, what do you know?
The, the proposed concept plan has just a single entrance. They, they originally included a potential drive all the way to that far end that you're referencing to Glen's Creek and there were some comments from the transportation cabinet about that. There's some interesting geometry and topography that, that gets involved when you try to connect over there. So they amended that original concept plan to just include the single entrance and the cabinet and traffic engineer hasn't had any issues with that, so.
Another question.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I was concerned about the report by the city of Frankfurt and the sewer department and was wondering if these concerns will be addressed prior to any further development on the property.
Mr. Cockley.
I didn't get all of that, Mr. Boggs, if you could repeat.
Yes, the report by by the engineer from the Frankfurt Sewer Department stated that there was some concerns over land disturbance and I was wondering if these would be addressed prior to further development on the property.
Yeah, as I recall, that had to do with the amount of fill over lines and so that's more of an engineering question that we'll be able to handle during, during development plan review and things of that nature. So that's kind of one of those things that they want to get out there early on, so the, the property owners are aware that we're going to, we're going to have to incorporate that into corporate design.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Another question.
Yes, sir. You know, I looked at the, the transportation study there and, you know, I know where that is and that's, is there going to be a turning lane? That's, that's almost a sneaky, I mean, I said, it's a, not a real bold entrance there going back into what might be several units and, and I know that they're not, they're not 100 visits a day, but is there, does that, would there be a turning lane? Will there be anything that, it, it just seems to be pretty bland, you know, a break right there in the, in the roadway? It just doesn't look like it would be something that would present itself and, and be obviously visible to oncoming traffic. Is that, what, what will that shape up to be? I mean, is there going to be changes that sneaks upon you?
At this point, they haven't proposed any changes and, and Mr. Eaton at the cabinet that reviewed it hasn't suggested that he would require any. Without seeing a development plan, I can't tell you exactly what that entrance would look like potentially. You know, it's, it's pretty close to the, the east west connector as well, so I'm, I'm kind of with you that if we had a larger traffic generator, I would have some concerns. It does at least line up opposite the road across Martin Luther King. So it's, it's at an area where people are aware, at least there's an existing intersection, so they're aware that there's some turning movements, which helps. I don't have much further to add on that.
Okay.
I need, I need to remind the members of the commission that we're, we're doing the zone change, so you be, need to be careful about the questions that they don't lead over into the development plan area. I could feel Mr. Logan reminding me of that, so I figured I'd do it first.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question, if, if no other commission member have a question. Ms. Cockley, looking at the location that's proposed there, there's a pretty steep topography there. And I guess the question is, does the topography that's there, is it, is it able to accommodate the proposed use under this zone change? Do, do you see that topography being?
I'm, I'm familiar with the site and, and, and it does have, you know, some grade changes. My only answer to that to be perfectly frank is that I've, I've not seen engineered drawings yet, so I can only assume that the applicant, by virtue of their interest in the project, has, has at least done some basic due diligence that, that the grade changes and, and the, you know, the area of construction is appropriate for what they want to put on it. Otherwise, they would not feel like this is an appropriate site. Obviously, during development plan time, we will be looking at driveway grades, things of that nature, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have a question for Scott. Do the size of this project, will this come back to us, the playing zone for development plan approval?
Only if you require it.
Okay, thank you.
Other question?
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, Mr. Logan?
Do we have any other individuals that want to speak either for or against this project?
I was, well, I was going to ask that question of staff since I can't see the audience.
That's why I'm asking you. I can't, I can't see who all is on this.
We have an applicant's representative. I don't know if they, they want to speak. Other than that, I can tell you that we have received no, no interest from any of the joining property owners, no complaints from any other members of the community or comment otherwise.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Can you see me?
Yes, Mr. Bolt.
Yes, sir. Would this be appropriate for me to just introduce myself?
Well, it's not, you're the applicant, and it's not just yet.
Okay.
Unless you have a question.
No, sir.
Of staff.
No, sir.
Okay, give me just a moment.
You betcha.
Are there any other questions by commission members of staff? And then, Mr. Logan, as a follow-up to your comment, would it be appropriate for us to have an entry in the minutes that there were no individuals, members of the public who wished to speak for or against?
I would hope that, I'd hope that Mr. Coughley's testimony will be recorded by Ms. Sewell in her usual fashion, and that we'd already have that in the record.
I'm going to be like you. Then, Mr. Bolt? If you're doing the testifying, then Ms. Sewell needs to swear you in.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bolt, will you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Then, Mr. Bolt, as the applicant, this is your opportunity to make a presentation with regard to the zone change request.
Yes, sir. I will be brief. My name is Stephen Bolt. I'm the president and founder of Precious Living Resorts. We are very excited about this development. We have a number of other projects going on in Michigan, Virginia, and we're looking at doing one in Tennessee and possibly another one in Kentucky. I have spent a lot of time in Frankfurt. I'm in Nashville, by the way. We spend a lot of time up in, in the Frankfurt area, and it's beautiful. You all have a beautiful community and wonderful people. And somebody told me you even have bourbon up there somewhere. But, but no, it's a, it's a great project. I think it's going to be very vibrant for the community. It's beautiful. We use only proven builders. As a matter of fact, we're talking with the Walker Company out of Mount Sterling to be the builder construction for us. Our operator is going to be Paradigm Senior Living. We've already contracted with them. They're out of Portland, Oregon. They manage dozens and dozens of senior communities across the country, from Anchorage, Alaska, down to Florida and up to New York. So we have proven entities that have partnered with us to bring this project about. But we expect it to be very vibrant, very state-of-the-art, both in terms of the, the way that senior living is moving now with the, what we now know about, for example, about a third of the community is going to be dedicated to memory care. And there's a lot happening in the memory, memory care architecture, believe it or not, with what we're learning about dementia and Alzheimer's in particular. So it's going to be state-of-the-art. It'll be beautiful. It will be a, I think, wonderful addition to the community. And if I could say one more thing, we work with a lot of churches, and we anticipate doing that here as well. And as I tell pastors, and when I meet with church boards, I say, you know, the demographic shift that is occurring across the United States is unprecedented today. And when you're doing your sermon, you look out over the congregation, pick any three people anywhere, and statistically, one out of those three people right now is dealing with the question of what do I do with mom or dad? It's just, that's just where we are, and that's where we're going to be for about another 30 years. So we serve that purpose. We do it with, again, highly competent and experienced, proven entities, operators, architects, engineers, et cetera. And I'll just leave it at that. We're excited about this development and appreciate you all taking a look at the zoning change request.
Hey, Mr. Coughley, do you have a question of Mr. Bolt?
I do not.
Does any commission member have a question of Mr. Bolt? Mr. Lee?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bolt, I assume that you have seen the report from staff?
I have.
And do you agree?
What I have seen, yes.
Okay, and you're fine with it. I just want to put that on record that you agree with it.
Yeah, can I make, make a comment on that? Can I make a comment on that?
Yeah.
There was, there was a question about the, the tour line and the fact that there, there is a lot of dirt that's on it right now, and maybe more as we finish the development out. We are aware of that, and we are working on that. And that, as you had mentioned, I think, Mr. Chairman, we will be bringing that back with our recommendations. By the way, the engineer on this project is HMB. So we'll be bringing that information back to you. Similarly, we'll be bringing that information on the development plan with regard to whether or not there's a need for a turning lane or changes in the entrance. I took note of both of those issues that came up.
But, Mr. Bolt, I think that Mr. Lee's question, you, it's a little bit simpler in that he's asking you that since the staff did a summary of their review of your project and have recommended to the commission that your request be affirmed, do you, or do you not agree with the staff report?
Yes, I most certainly do.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that you knew what was there. Other questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bolt, please. Daryl, are you, Mr. Sanderson, do you have a question?
No, not at all.
Oh.
I would, I would like to see the development plan come back before the commissioner so that we could look at Mr. Wright's issues about turning lanes and so on and so forth.
Right, okay. Mr. Bolt, have you actually seen the property? Have you been up, take a look at it?
A number of times, quite a number of times, yes. And we're very comfortable with it. We're comfortable with the topography. There's, we're not obviously going to build on the entirety of the project. Probably about, you know, I don't know how many acres what we have in this footprint right now, but we're utilizing the flat part of the top, as you can imagine, primarily. And we, you know, again, working with HMB and Walker and our operator, all of us have been out there numerous times. And then we, of course, already have a preliminary footprint down that we will be further developing and bringing back to you all.
Okay, so.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Mr. Bolt, on top of that hill are a lot of power lines that run right through the middle of that property. Are you all developing close to, under those power lines?
We do not yet, no. We don't anticipate the main community being anywhere near there. I can't get my directions right, so I don't know if it's east, west, north, or south. But no, we'll not be underneath there as planned right now. Thank you.
Can you share with us, Mr. Bolt? What, what, what was your logic for choosing that particular site as opposed to another site here in Frankfurt to, to construct your project?
I'll try to be succinct in answering that. About a year ago or more, I was contacted by a member of Good Shepherd Catholic Church about us coming alongside them and doing something to help in regard to a, what they saw and we saw as a, an opportunity to serve the elderly community in your area with senior housing. And at that time, there was a parcel of land next to, actually, it joined Good Shepherd Catholic Church that we were looking at. And as we were looking at it, as happens sometimes, it was purchased by another entity. And so, but the, by that time, it also talked with, I think it is, is it Capital Christian Church, First Church Capital, about a mile away from Good Shepherd? And they too were interested. And so I think a number of you, Eric in particular, know Troy Williams, and he's the one that I met. And he's, of course, a developer there in your area as well, single-family homes and such. And so he and I both started looking for an appropriate parcel and also doing some preliminary market research. And the market study that we had come back illustrated a pretty strong demand for assisted housing, assisted living, as well as memory care, and even independent living, just because of the nature of what Frankfurt is, as the capital of Kentucky, and the dynamics associated with that. So we arrived at this location, and quite frankly, the very first time Troy took me out there, I thought it would be just beautiful. I mean, you got, you got not a whole lot of hard, you know, mature hardwoods out there. You got some. And the topography on the one hand is challenging. On another hand, it makes it that much more attractive as you're driving up to it and when you're up top on there and looking out as a resident or a family. And so it's, it's a very, very attractive site for us. We think it works in every way we need it to work. And as far as the, the surrounding community, the PMA, premier market area, there is a need for more assisted living and memory care, and we would like to be the ones to provide that.
In, in terms of your review of the site, when, when you all reviewed the site, did you notice that it does serve as an environmentally sensitive site as it relates to maintaining herds of deer and other wildlife that's there in the area?
There was some discussion by our development team about that, yes. We obviously would have that as a priority to make sure that we don't provide any more disruption than is necessary for that. That just simply adds, the nature aspect of it adds to the value of the whole community.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions? If not, Mr. Legal Counsel, do you have any questions? I'm sorry.
No, sir, I do not.
Ms. Cross?
Mr. Chairman, I think Miller has a question for you.
Jordan has a question.
Yeah, I just, hey, I just wanted to.
Your application on my screen.
Hey, Jordan Miller, City of Frankfurt Planning Staff. I just wanted to comment about one of your first questions that you asked Mr. Bolt a second ago. The City of Frankfurt, since 2000, we've had a pretty stagnant population growth and not really declining. So you could say that our population there is aging. So I would say that the use that Mr. Bolt is proposing is definitely something that this community is going to need in the future. And pretty relevant.
Are there any further questions? If not, Cheryl, entertain a motion with regard to this item, close the public hearing, that a summary can be put together and deal with it at February.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lee?
I need to, I need to actually ask Mr. Logan to legally make sure I'm doing this correctly, but I want to put for, on the public record, that I was part of an entity that owned this property. At one time, I sold it two years ago, and I had no monetary gain or loss based on what's going on. But I want to put that on the public record and ask Mr. Logan if I can still vote on it.
In my opinion, you, you can. You have no financial interest, which disqualifies you.
Thank you. In that case, Mr. Chairman, in lieu of testimony, I would say that I would ask Mr. Logan again, do we go ahead and vote on tonight? Or do we need to prepare summary?
In my opinion, the, the summary, there's only been one side of testimony which has been presented, and a summary would not necessarily be required, but I certainly can see if the commission wants to think about it and look at some of those items, they could do that. So either one would, would be appropriate, in my opinion.
I think, this motion, I think will satisfy everybody on the committee, I believe. I would like to make the motion to close public hearing, and in lieu of the, in lieu of testimony, go ahead and recommend a of the amendment from Residential B District RB to the London Commercial CL for the property located on 1 Martin Luther King Boulevard, with the condition that the development plan needs to come back to this body for approval.
Mr. Lee, would you also include in your, that we are adopting the staff report in lieu of the summary?
I knew I missed something. Yes, sir. Please, please add that to my motion.
Second.
And I would, and I would second that.
Okay, been moved and properly seconded that we close the public hearing, adopt the staff report as a summary of this item, and also adopt the findings of fact that staff provided in the report?
Yes, all the, with approval.
Well, with the condition.
With the condition.
Approval as a separate.
The development plan goes back to this body.
We need to do, we need to do the approval, the recommendation as a separate motion. But as long as we got these three things together, then we can next move to the.
Okay. We'll do it, we'll do it in two parts here.
And who was the second? Was that you, Patty?
It's me.
Okay. Vicki, did you get that?
Yes.
Okay. So are there questions on the motion? Motion?
The development plan, the development plan will definitely go back in front of Planning Commission.
That will be our recommendation. Yes, sir.
Yes.
Question? Question? All in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
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 O's likewise. Motion carried. Now that we have all of that, Cheryl, entertain a motion to either recommend a zone change or not a zone change.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lee? Mr. Lee.
I would like to make the motion for approval of zone map amendment from RB District to CL for the property located 101 Martin Luther King Boulevard with the condition that the development plan comes back to the planning zoning commission for approval.
They're second.
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 Been properly moved and seconded that the commission recommend to the city commissions that the request of President Frankfurt One LLC for a zone change from a combination of RB CL to a full CL of both parcels uh be approved.
With the condition.
With the condition that the development plan is uh presented to the planning commission for consideration uh at whatever point. Russell, did you have a uh?
I do not, no, no.
Okay. Uh, if there is no discussion, I'm pleading. Uh, Madam Secretary, please call the robe.
Ms. Bennett? Mr. Boggs? Mr. Boggs? Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Jonathan Jackson?
Yes.
An animal.
And we'll move to the next item on our agenda, the new business.
Public hearing. E. Calvert Kelsey Prime Holdings LLC is requesting approval of a zone map amendment from Industrial General District IG to Rural Residential C District RC for a 5.0 acre portion of property along Forest Ridge Drive, Stedman Town Lane, also known as Kentucky 2822 and Lyons Way. The parent track is more specifically identified as PVA map number This is a county item.
Okay. Uh if you please swear in uh Mr. Hewitt and the applicant, please.
Yes. Will you all both raise your hands? Your right hands, I apologize. Do you swear to tell the truth, uh, yes?
Would you mind, uh, we'd like to swear in uh Ben Judah as well, please.
Okay, yes. Do you all swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, this Logan?
Mr. Judah, did you prepare the reporting? Will you be testifying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Would you state your name and position with uh county planning for the record?
Ben Judah, Planning Supervisor with Franklin County.
And Ben, would uh how long have you been uh with the County of Franklin in the planning office?
Little over two years now.
As a part of your position as planning supervisor, did you review the request of E. Calvert Kelsey Prime Holdings?
I did.
And as part of that request for rezone, did you reduce your findings and recommendations to staff report?
I have.
And in each of the areas, did you find that uh the your staff findings were positive for the requested zone change?
All positive findings.
Right? As a result of that, did you reduce this to the staff report to writing?
I did.
And did you conclude that this was an appropriate zone as requested?
Yes.
And are there any additions or deletions to your staff report?
I would like to add um the TRT facility review. Um, some of those responses from the review agencies due to the holidays a couple of weeks ago uh didn't get back to me until after the report went out. So um I have since heard from uh the sewer department, the road department, and Columbia Gas with no issues identified.
Right. Have you received any other uh complaints or concerns with regard to adjoining property owners?
No complaints or concerns. Did hear from one adjoiner uh with some general questions. I gave them the opportunity to provide input if they wished to do so, and they did not.
All right. Uh, would you briefly, for the planning commission, indicate the basis for your recommendation of this zone map amendment?
Yeah, so um just a brief summary. Um, this is located across Stedman Town Lane from Lakeview Park. Uh, to the north is the Maples subdivision. Uh, this request essentially would uh result uh if approved uh as an addition to that subdivision. Uh, it would be not that entire track as you're seeing on the screen now, but just a five-acre portion of that parent track was uh what we're considering before you to hear today. Um, I did have four uh findings of fact that I would also like to enter into the record. And um based upon the proposed zone, RC, it would allow for up to 36 units. However, uh based upon the preliminary plat that the applicant has provided, they're only showing 15 lots.
Thank you, Mr. Judah.
Yes.
Mr. Chair had moved that the staff report be filed into the record.
Go ahead.
I'll be happy to take any questions as well.
Mr. Chairman.
I made it.
What what part of the five acres? It the property's bigger than five acres. It's in front of the back.
It uh it'd be the front corner, uh kind of up towards the Maples along Stedman Town Lane. It's kind of in like a, there's a rendering of it right there. It would entrance would come off of Forest Ridge Drive and connect over to Lyons. And then it would also provide for uh a currently unnamed cul-de-sac.
Is that in our packet?
Yes, it's in the uh application portion of the uh packet. So if you go past the applicant's application, uh it was provided in with their application. So that's where it was included in your report. After the legal description.
Right, it's gone, probably.
How much total land is on the five acres? And how much is uh that, how much is the total land part of that property?
I can't recall off the top of my head the exact acreage of the parent track, but this proposal is only looking to rezone and utilize a portion, a five-acre portion of that track.
Right, is that half? How much is that half of?
It's probably less than half.
Forty-two acres.
How many acres are there altogether?
Forty-two.
And you're wanting, and this is to to redevelop that front around Lyons Way?
It's kind of like the northwest corner of that lot, so just a five-acre portion. Um, the western side of that lot on the northern boundary line, just south of the Maples subdivision, currently where Forest Ridge Drive uh ends at a cul-de-sac. That cul-de-sac would turn into a through condition over to Lyons Way.
Is there going to be a future exit road brought out of that subdivision? Because it's obviously that there's a possibility that more of it will be developed in the future.
So the the concept plan, or I guess I should call it a preliminary plat, uh does indicate a connection to Lyons Way.
Okay. Does Lyons Way come out on Fort on to uh Stedman Town Lane anywhere?
I believe it has two access points to Stedman Town Lane.
On each side of the old Rutledge pro of the ex Rutledge property?
I think that I believe that's correct.
But this time, we're not going to upgrade another entrance into the property, right?
It would utilize existing access points.
My concern is in the report about emergency vehicles being able to get into the subdivision. It's already quite large with one entrance only. Adding more lots into this on that end is only going to complicate that entrance exit that much more with one entrance.
Well, there's an existing entrance into the Maple subdivision that could be used. And then with the connection to Lyons Way, this would actually result in a net increase of one entrance for the entire neighborhood.
The additional neighborhood.
Existing neighborhood has a uh entrance onto Stedman Town Lane that this proposal would connect to.
Oh, will will Calvert's Lane be crossing over? Will it connect into this uh Lyons Way, or does it now? I can't tell with a map. It's that road that cuts right across the existing subdivision. And uh will it will it now be connected to the new new subdivision or Lyons Way?
Uh, so what they're showing on their preliminary plat is a, there will be a connection from Forest Ridge Drive, which is uh an existing road that goes throughout the Maple subdivision that will continue on through to Lyons Way. Uh, so it would create a new access point oh with Lyons Way into the Maples. Currently, the Maples, there's only one access point uh on the western portion of the neighborhood, uh a small connection road that connects as Robert's zooming in on it now, Forest Drive, Forest Ridge Drive to Stedman Town Lane is how the Maples is currently accessed.
Chairman Jackson, if I may?
Yes, Roberts.
This is Robert Hewitt. Uh, the answer to to the question is, there will be no, there is no proposed connection to Calvert Lane. It is approximately 600. The back of the applicant's proposed preliminary subdivision is approximately 680 feet uh through the west from Calvert Lane. So the answer is no.
Okay. Thank you.
So one more question. If this road's going to be accessible through for school buses and so on, or whether kids have to walk from the Cuddy Sack out to White Cliff or anywhere in that area?
Uh, I'm unfamiliar with the current bus routes through the subdivision, but I would imagine that if uh if it need be, the school bus could serve the area.
Mr. Chairman, may I insert that our our staff is talking about things that are not part of zoning, and I don't believe we should, I I don't believe county staff can say what will or will not happen with the school bus routes.
Does everyone understand that? Good. Stick to the zone change. Other question?
Mr. Chairman, maybe I can ask it a di- a different way.
Okay.
To staff of any new cul-de-sac or rack or road that 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 these are that's approved would have to have the correct radius, radiance of the cul-de-sac for for emergency vehicles and and such, is that correct?
That is correct. The road would be built to the county's standards.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, other question? Mr. Jones, do you have any questions of staff?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. There being no further questions by commission members, Mr. Jones, as the app representing the applicant, would you please make your presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And uh, Mr. Chairman and and commissioners, my name is Charlie Jones, represent the applicant here today. Uh, we have reviewed staff report and have no uh objections to the staff report or nothing to add to that. As for a couple of questions that kind have come up uh during the discussions here, the property is approximately 42 acres. We're seeking to resign only five acres of that property. This is five acres that is immediately adjacent and contiguous with the adj- adjacent Maple subdivision. The Maple subdivision, when first developed, did have a cul-de-sac that came into this property that was built for the potential of future expansion. And this is a a natural progression of that. Uh, approximately uh 15 lots. Uh, we do appreciate that there may be have to be some uh roadway improvements for the access onto Lyons Way that leads to Stedman Town and uh anticipate dealing with that during the uh subdivision development plan process. Um, and that's all I would add unless the uh uh staff or commission members have any questions, let me.
Does staff have a question of the applicant?
I do not.
No, sir.
Okay. Then does commissioners have questions of the applicant? Seeing none? Uh, Mr. Logan, do you have any questions of the applicant?
No, Your Honor.
And uh, Ms. Bennett, I can't see you, so are you? Do you have any question?
No, sir, I do not have any question, thank you, sir.
Okay. In that case, uh we've already said that there are no one in the public uh sector that uh had a question or wanted to testify. So at this point, Chair Lentain a motion with regard to action on this request.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I could request the commission, since there's limited testimony tonight, to consider uh adopting findings of fact this evening if possible.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Lee, thank you.
Before I make a motion, I I want to be correct. I want to ask staff one quick question. I do not see anybody that has commented negatively in adjacent landowners. Am I, am I correct with that?
I have not heard anything negative from any of the adjacent property owners, that is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Lee, if I could follow up, I did have a conversation with a with a property owner on White Cliff's Lane who only inquired specifically concerning access to uh overhead power lines. Um, I did provide that individual property owner with a copy of the staff report. Uh, I spent 45 minutes on the phone with that owner, and uh they did not reach back out to me today with any additional questions. Uh, they were thankful for the uh for the information and did not uh voice an objection.
But that's good, knowing the in the in the world we live in now, I know it's a little tough for people to come see us in a meeting, whatnot. I want to make sure that uh we have all the information like that in front of us. All that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we uh close the public hearing and we adopt the staff report in lieu of the summary. and we adopt the staff report in lieu of summary.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Lee, second by Mr. Wright, that we close the public hearing and adopt the staff report as a summary of the public hearing for the item and take action on this, uh, request this evening. Is there a second? I just got that, didn't I?
Second.
So, uh, are there questions, uh, on the motion? Questions on the motion, questions on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed likewise? Seeing none, motion passes. Floor is now open for findings of fact.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lee.
I would, uh, like to, put findings of fact from the staff reports. It doesn't have page number, which I can't.
Twelve.
Page 12. Fact, uh, findings number one, two, three, and four.
Second.
Moved and properly second that we adopt this finding of fact, item one, two, three, and four on page 12 of the staff report. There are discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. There being none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
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 Opposed likewise? No opposition. Finding of facts are adopted. Are there other findings of fact? Hearing none, Chair will entertain a motion to cease.
I'll make the motion that we close findings.
Second.
Moved and properly second that, um, finding the facts cease. There, uh, discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
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 Opposed likewise? Hearing none, motion passes. Chair will now entertain a motion to either recommend to fiscal court that, uh, the zone change as requested be approved or that the zone change as requested not be approved.
Chairman, I have a recommendation that the motion be approved.
Okay, uh, Mr. Sanderson, uh, do me a favor and, uh, reach back in your, uh, repertoire and give me just a little bit more information on that, on that recommendation. I know you know how to do it because you've done it before.
Beautiful. With the finding of facts, um, I like to make the recommendation that the motion be approved and sent to fiscal court per the finding of facts and no opposition.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, with, with approval from, uh, Mr. Sanderson, uh, approval from I, IG to Rural Rest- Rural Residential C for the property located, uh,
Five acres.
At, uh, at the fight for the five acres. Where's it located?
Along Forest Ridge Drive.
Five acres of property along Forest Ridge Drive, Stedman Town Lane, and Lyons Way. If that, if that's. With Mr. Sanderson.
We have, we have a, a motion by Mr. Sanderson, the second by Mr. Lee that the planning commission recommend to fiscal court that the request by E. Calvert Kelsey Prime Holdings of, uh, Frankfort, Kentucky to rezone five acres of a 40 acre tract located at, uh, the intersection of Forest Ridge Drive, Stedman Town Lane, and Lyons Way from, uh, IG to residential C District be approved and that the development plan be forwarded to the planning commission for review and action, before implementation. And we had, we had to second to that as there are discussion on motion.
Mr. Jackson, this is Robert Hewitt, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Hewitt.
Um, this is a, uh, subdivision plat, um, as opposed to a development plan. The, the subdivision and development plan regulations have an administrative process for the submission of a preliminary subdivision plat, construction plans, and a final plat. Not requiring approval by the planning commission. I would recommend that, that the commission, uh, simply approve the zone change and allow the administrative process to, to proceed with the technical review team.
Uh, I would agree with you on Mr. Hewitt. We, we want to see it. And we want to take an action on it. And, uh, expression on Mr. Jones's face, but we want to see it. Whether it's a subdivision plat or it's a development plan.
Uh, understood. Uh, it, which portion of the process would the commission like to review the development?
We want to see, uh, not only the, the, uh, turn in and out, but also the connection of the, uh, development to the existing, uh, uh, development just down the hill from there where, uh, how it fits and et cetera.
So.
Preliminary plat?
Would, would the commission prefer to see the preliminary plat and then subsequent construction plans?
We want to see both of them.
Uh, would the commission prefer to, uh, also, uh, review and consider the final subdivision plat?
We want to see all three.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, uh, point of order. Part of what Mr. Sanderson's motion was, I, just to be, to be clear.
I think Mr. Sanderson's motion, uh, included a request to review the, uh, the documents.
I don't think I've requested that.
I didn't think it.
Okay. Well, that's okay. The chair requests. Mr. Jones, we want to see it. We want to see it all. So that's a motion and a second. We're at the point where Madam Secretary call the robe.
Ms. Bennett? Yes.
Question, question, Chair.
Beg your pardon?
Just a quick question. Well, can, can, since there are multiple steps to that, is it possible that we can see the preliminary and then defer the rest to staff at that point?
Uh.
I think our primary interest is the connection to the roadways, if I understood the questions. And if we see that on the preliminary, then maybe we, I don't, we, we don't want to slow something down unnecessarily. I don't think, do we?
No, sir. I don't think we want to. But experience has taught me that we want to see all three documents. And that's, uh, beginning in 1989. I too, Mr. Jones, starting to appear before the planning commission.
Mr. Chairman, I want to disagree with your tenure. And.
Okay.
It's been a long list as we've all been on there, but I do, I'm checking Mr. Logan. I mean, we have a, we have a motion that doesn't have that as a second. And all I want to say is we have, we have county rules or regulations that this will all have to follow as far as so, so cul-de-sac radius and all this. And in, in my personal opinion, no disrespect, Mr. Chairman, I, I feel like we have a staff that is certainly qualified to, to handle that. That's my opinion. If, if that is a condition on this, then I respectfully want to, take my, take my second out of this motion because I, I was under pressure. This motion was, was to approve staff and the rest of it. I, I could be wrong. I don't, I don't want, I don't know exactly what. I want to make sure this is correctly.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Lee, I'm not offended by your, by your position at all.
Mr. Chairman, I think that, I think that Mr. Sanderson has said he did not include it.
He did not.
Has said that he did not request it. I think we can vote on that. And then if you wish to entertain a motion to add additional things, that would be a second phase, Mr. Chairman.
We can do that.
Thank you, sir.
And I withdraw my, uh, addition to Mr. Sanderson's motion. And at that point, uh, we need to ask Madam Secretary to call the robe, uh, starting from the beginning.
Chairman, did, uh, Mr. Lee, did Mr. Lee pull his second? Did he, was that?
No, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Sorry.
We have a motion on the floor and I have a second. Yes, sir.
Ms. Bennett? Yes, again. Mr. Boggs? Mr. Boggs? Mr. Boggs?
I think he has left the meeting, Ms. Sue.
No, he's still here.
He's blinking his eyes. He's, he's, he's still, uh, picture posted there. It's really him.
I, I'll show him as not voting. Ms. Cross?
Um, yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Chairman Jackson?
Yes. Now go back and ask David Boggs, does he want to vote yet?
Mr. Boggs? Mr. Boggs?
Okay.
Now, Mr. Chairman, did you wish to make another motion which included approval of the plans? Or was that just discussion?
No, uh, Ms., Ms., Mr. Logan, I, I want to make a motion that any development plan, uh, related to the property come back to the planning commission for review and action. And if I don't get a second, that just means I don't get a second.
I'll second that motion, Chair.
Moved properly second. Discussion, please.
Chairman Jackson, if I may?
Yes.
For clarification with staff, uh, does your motion include commission, uh, review of the preliminary plat, construction plans, and final plat?
I would really love to see it all, Robert, but if the final plat doesn't change anything, we don't have to see that. I just know that preliminary plans, I was told many times, really don't mean anything. They can be changed or whatever after the planning commission has seen it. And preliminary plans are not recommended for the planning commission to even act on. It's just there for information. Now, if we're giving preliminary plans a, 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 a status and a place where they're treated the same as, uh, development plans and other things so that if they're changed and et cetera, then reviewing the preliminary plan has meaning and it has status. But it, my example is this. We get preliminary information with every zone change. And then we're told that it's there just to give you an idea of what might go there. Immediately after a zone change happened, the applicant can sell or change his or her mind as to what would go there. And there's, there's nothing attached to it. So we, I mean, I'd like to have the planning commission see a document that is meaningful and has status. So that if the applicant changes things, the commission will be able to see that and make commentary on that. Now, maybe I have misunderstood the explanation that has been given me for preliminary documents over the years. And if I have, I apologize.
Mr. Jackson, um, if, if, uh, if I could clarify from the administrative position, preliminary development plans differ from preliminary plats. Um, in, in the current city county regulations, preliminary plats precede construction plans and final subdivision plats. There is a, a public review process for preliminary plats that authorizes the issuance of a final subd- subdivision plat. The final plat must be actually consistent with the preliminary plat. Otherwise, the process reverses and goes back to another preliminary plat. Um, while the commission has every right to review all these documents, um, uh, just bear in mind that, that the regulations do have an established administrative process for plats that differ from development plans. So a preliminary subdivision plat is, uh, in my opinion, more substantial than, than a conceptual development plan for a zone change. In my tenure, I, 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 um, combine degrees of the process uh, somewhat from the subdivision regulations such that in- instead of separating each step, uh, I request construction plans to be submitted simultaneous to the preliminary develop, uh, preliminary sub- subdivision plat so that I can ensure that things, public improvements such as road grades, stormwater infrastructure, sanitary sewers, sidewalks, cross-sections, things of that nature, will all work together. So it, the preliminary plat is not just a flat image on the paper. It is more of a work. workable document. While I am always happy to present things to the commission at wish, the preliminary plat is, is a more substantial document than, than a conceptual development plan. You know, this is a simple 15 lot subdivision with a very small, uh, road section. And so if, and to keep the process moving, um, i- if the commission does vote to bring this for you, I would present to you, uh, a two-step process. That would be a preliminary subdivision plat with construction plans is one step. And then I would follow up hopefully the next meeting with the final subdivision plat for approval. Based on the review of the technical review team. Mr. Jackson, may I ask Mr. Hewitt a question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hewitt, since this is a, a simple 15 lot, uh, plan, would it be better in this case for you to do the preliminary, do the construction, then have the final come back to the commission for review when all things are set? Yes, sir. And that would only be a one-step process for us instead of you having to come back twice? Is that, would that be a fair statement? Yes. Okay. Would the chair consider doing that?
That would work. Somebody was, Mr. Lee?
Mr. Chairman, uh, before we vote, I'm very, very respectfully going to vote no for this. For this basic reason, we have many rules, regulations, stipulations. This is not going to be passed unless a fire truck can get in there or an ambulance. It's not going to pass. It has, it's going to have to have certain guidelines and all that's necessary. So I will be voting no. But I want, Mr. Chairman, what, what I plan to do is possibly make another motion. If that doesn't pass, that it has a condition that this is limited to 15 lots.
Okay. I, my feelings won't be hurt. Other question, if not, Madam Secretary?
Chairman Jackson, can you tell me who seconded that motion?
Well, based upon the advice of counsel and further explanation by Mr. Hewitt, the planning director, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that we need to see the final, uh, plat and not the other two. Not the preliminary and not the construction document.
I second that, Ms. Sewell.
Okay, thank you. Who was that, that seconded?
Mr. Looney.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Ms. Bennett? Ms. Bennett? Mr. Boggs? Ms. Cross?
Oh my goodness. Yes.
Mr. Lee?
No.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
I respect no.
Mr. Sanderson?
No.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell? Mr. Terrell?
I can't.
I can't hear you.
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Chairman Jackson?
Yeah.
Motion passes six to three.
Thank you. That concludes the printing agenda. There any thing that anyone else would like to have discussed before we reach out? Mr. Looney?
Um, if, if, I wonder if it's possible, if I could make a request going forward, could we get the reports in color PDFs digitally, either in addition to, or in my case, it's fine to have it, uh, instead of an eight dollar mailing, pound of paper. I'd rather, it's difficult, and I'll say, besides the, the printing costs and having a bunch of paper, it's difficult sometimes in a black and white reproduction to see color, uh, maps and pictures and things. They don't, they don't come out as well. So it'd be nice if we had those in the, I, my case, I prefer a colored PDF if that's possible.
Eric? Eric and Robert?
Uh, yes. If the commission is so inclined, the, the county government, government would love to eliminate copies, specifically any color copies. If we could distribute electronically, we would be more than happy to do so.
Yeah, you, you just made staff report day a whole lot easier.
Guys, I might rain on the parade a little bit. Uh, unfortunately, given the nature of us trying to vote visually and communicate over Zoom, go to meetings, et cetera, having to flip back and forth through a P, a digital PDF at the same time is going to be a bit cumbersome. And I appreciate, uh, Mr. Looney's stance. It is difficult to, uh, understand these plats and, um, a layout without the color, uh, color commentary, literally covering color commentary. So my, my opinion is that we do need it. I, if you want to continue to print out black and white, but give us the color PDF that we can line up and make some notes, that would be great. Um, my standpoint is I, I do believe at this time, we, until we get back into maybe a, um, an in-person meeting, that we do need the copies.
Yeah, that's fine. We could, we could be sending these out electronically and then we'll go ahead and continue making sure you get a hard copy. And if anybody else would like to continue getting a hard copy, we can get colored hard copies out. Just let us know and then we'll, Robert and I can coordinate when we get to, to staff report day. So, um, yeah.
If I could add, uh, a, a small detail, the, the county leases are, um, copy machines. And so we are charged differently between a black and white copy and a color copy. And, and if you recall, um, there was a, a zone change case on Duncan Road that occurred last year that was, I don't know, somewhere around 500 pages. And so, you know, when, when you copied 20 of those, it becomes quite expensive for, for the taxpayers. So, um, if we, if we could, uh, continue with black and white copies and then email a PDF, that's acceptable to everyone. We're happy to do so.
Sounds good.
Other discussion?
Good to see you take good care of our tax dollars, Robert.
Well, Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Lee?
Before we adjourn, is, is it possible that after the meeting, uh, the three people on the nominee committee, myself, Ms. Cross, and who's the other one?
Mr. Boggs.
Mr. Boggs.
Do you possibly stay on and have a, and talk for, for a couple minutes after the meeting? Is that possible?
Eric? And is it possible to, to, uh, for everyone else to, to, to log off, uh, leave the meeting?
I would imagine we can all leave and, uh, and we can stop the live stream on Facebook and, and Cableten can sign off. Um, and, and what I'll, I'll do, I'll hang tight just long enough for, for Bobby and, and Zach to, to verify that you guys are, are having your own conversation and then I'll sign off too and, and you guys can, can finish off. We, that shouldn't be a big deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, in, in terms of Mr. Looney's inquiry though, is it possible that individuals on the commission who would welcome?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is David Boggs.
Yes, yes.
Oh.
Yes. Yeah, yes. Somehow I was left off on the last vote.
Uh, Ms. Sewell, are you still there?
Yes.
Was it at six thirty?
Mr. Boggs, how would you vote on that last item?
Yes. No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Now, well, what does that do in terms?
Motion passes six to four.
Okay.
Uh, Chairman Jackson?
Yeah.
If I may, I believe Kate Bennett, uh, uh, also was not responsive and is still on the, if we could reach back out to her?
It's 11 people.
Ms. Bennett?
He wouldn't check.
Or maybe she was abstaining. So let me finish up. Uh, for commission members who would welcome to have the electronic version of the agenda and the materials, but would not like to have a printed copy mailed to them, can we just get them to, to, to notify or tell Robert, go on the record, tell Robert and tell Eric to send it to them electronically rather than mail, do a mail out? Would that work? And those, and those who would like to have the hard copy of the materials, continue to, uh, receive a, a hard copy and it's currently black and white? So maybe that's what you get. Is that possible?
So if you don't hear anything, you get a hard copy. If you want a, a electronically delivered PDF, you'll, you'll contact Eric and Bob, Robert. Right? That's the best way. If you hear nothing, you want to go on as, as you have been.
Well, either that or just send an email. You can, it's easy to send an email saying, send me the electronic copy only. And that way for their records.
Right. That's what I mean. If you did, if, if you, if you want the hard copy, you don't send an email. You don't say anything at all. Yeah.
If you want the hard copy, it'll come today.
So is Eric and Robert going to let us know when it's available? So that we're not having to look every day to see?
Well, we would send that out the, the same day. So, well, so what we generally do, our, our staff reports go out a week before the meeting. So if we email you electronic copies and or what's likely going to happen, uh, as Robert referenced, the, the size of some of these documents, once we turn them into colored PDFs, you may get an email with a link um, to a Dropbox or Google Drive where we'll have that document and you'll get that a week before the meeting. And honestly, if we, if, if we're emailing it to one person, it's just as easy to email it to everybody. Um, it's the same, you know, amount of effort. So we can go ahead and email to everybody. And, and I'd say just if you would also like to get a hard copy, because that's not the way you do it, let me and Robert know. We've noted Tim wants a copy. Anybody else, like I said, just, just let us know and we'll continue to mail those out. Um, otherwise we'll, we'll put our packets together, scan and, and send out. Uh, probably the easiest way will be to do that will be a little bit different and, and Robert, you can comment if you want, you know, generally, well, I guess it depends. Sometimes we have separate packets. Sometimes we, we will go ahead and group our stuff together. But if we're scanning and emailing, the easiest thing is probably going to be that, that we do that independently so we don't have to wait on one another. Um, and then I'll continue with, with, with my packet, trying to send you, you know, the minutes and agenda and all that, that kind of thing. That makes sense to everybody.
Sounds good.
Work. Okay. I really appreciate you all, uh, hanging with us to the end of the meeting. This is prob, I probably set a record here. Uh, we hadn't had a meeting this long in god months. And so I apologize for that, but thank you for, for, uh, being with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Night, Tom.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, you all.